All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM. I'm calling to order the September 27 Fountain City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have seven members present.
Great, thank you. All right, we're on to item 4.1, Presentations. We have Kate Hatton here from Homefront Military Network for update of services and impact. Thank you so much for coming down and visiting with us tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. That's on, okay. I always, am I driving?
You're on.
Okay. All right. Thank you for having me, Homefront Military Network. I'll just jump right into it. At some point, we're going to take this slide away because everybody's going to remember that we're the product of a merger between Peak Military Care Network and the Homefront Cares, and we continue to do the mission of both organizations. We merged in January of 2020 before the world fell apart, and so we're now coming out of our hidey holes trying to remind people of who we are and what we do and make sure people know how to connect. And basically, what we do is we provide emergency financial assistance and connect service members, veterans, and families to resources in the community. Short version. So, oh, I guess I jumped ahead. That's what we do. So, our mission is really to connect service members, veterans, and families to resources offered by our trusted community partners and to provide emergency financial assistance. And we do that in a variety of ways. The direct assistance that we provide is financial bridge assistance statewide, including mortgage or rent assistance, utility bill assistance, and things like transportation, helping with car repairs, that sort of thing. Navigation, what we find out is that a lot of people come in the door maybe asking for rental assistance, but they have other, there's a reason they got into that financial crisis. And so, we really try to, as we say, peel back the onion and find out the why. It may be not just one thing, but multiple things. So, we want to help folks navigate and make sure they get to the right services ideally the first time, ideally before they're in crisis. And if we can provide that bridge support and keep somebody from becoming homeless or family from becoming homeless, and then connecting them to other services to keep them financially stable and emotionally stable as well, that's what we try to do long term. And sometimes it's just direct information assistance, somebody's new to this community, just moved here from another military community and don't know what's available, so we can help connect those dots as well. And then the education and outreach piece. Half of the battle is, and half of the reason I'm here, or most of the reason I'm here, is that people don't know how to access services, or they're overwhelmed and don't know where to start. So, the more we can tell the story about their resources, if people don't know how to connect, they can connect to us and we can connect to a whole big community of partners. We want people to know that. We also want to educate those community providers to understand the needs of our military and veteran community, to know and to recognize by collecting data how many military and veteran families they're serving, so that they can make sure they have the appropriate resources and responses to help. The best way to connect to our team for help is through, we can have a network of care websites, so if people are great at using the Internet, they can find information and services on our website. They can also fill out an online form and connect to our team directly. Just ask for, you just provide a phone number and email address, and our team will follow up directly. Or our phone line there, 719-577-7417. Our team answers that call, that phone. Or if people leave a message, that's a daunting task for some people, we can't answer, and we still have people working remotely, but our team does answer that voicemail line three times a day at least, if not, kind of on a continual basis, so that we do return phone calls if you leave a message. And then we can do our best to provide that personalized assistance. Beyond the direct assistance we provide, we connect to a community of partner agencies who provide everything on this list, from advocacy and financial assistance, benefits assistance, to the County Veteran Service Office, housing, employment, behavioral health, early care and education, and really anything that might touch a service member, veteran, or family member. And that's the ecosystem that we're working with. These are our partner agencies who signed an MOU with us, including an agency that Fred might recognize, Councilmember Hinton, and Operation TBI Freedom, as well as, again, 47 other partners providing, again, everything from emergency finance. We don't, we're not the only game in town in terms of emergency financial assistance. There's a big need, and we might partner with other agencies who might provide security deposit, and we provide the first month's rent. Or we provide utility bill assistance, they provide rent, or whatever it is that we try and kind of stretch everybody's dollars further. Again, so, really, again, just a broad ecosystem, everything from early care and education through hospice and palliative care, again, anything that touches a service member, veteran, or family member. Just to kind of give you some of the data, we're very kind of data geeky and try and collect a lot of information that we collect, that our team collects ourselves, as well as the partners tell us. And so, this is what we're still seeing in 2021 in terms of the impacts of the pandemic. I know that our agency helps a lot of folks who were still impacted by COVID, as are many of our partners. Some agencies have seen less, but in overall, generally, more have still, are still seeing an impact than not. Collectively, the Homefront Cares and Peak Military Care Network and our merged organization have served more than 211,000 service members, veterans, and families since inception. And since 2004, we've provided more than $5.8 million in emergency financial assistance. We've also helped, the partner agency network, again, asking how they, how many folks they've served as well, have provided assistance, services, more than 424,000 services, not unduplicated services. Somebody might be, have a child and head start at CPCD, be going to Pike's Peak, now State College, and be looking for jobs through the workforce center. So, but that's really kind of just showing the volume of service, and that's probably really a low number, because particularly since the pandemic, it's been hard for agencies to kind of track some data, but we're working on that. The other thing that we do, as I mentioned, is trying to educate partners on military and veteran culture, other resources that are available, kind of again, that, give everybody more tools in their toolbox to better serve, not make somebody who doesn't do the GI Bill on a regular basis to become experts in GI Bill, but know how to connect them. Or if somebody says, you know, my problem is that I've got, I can't get a job because mom is living with me and mom has Alzheimer's and I can't leave her alone, well, what resources are there? Through the area agency on aging or Silver Key or things that might help that family in other ways. So, it's really trying to be that kind of force multiplier and no wrong door approach. We want to make sure that those trainings are valuable to our partners, so we ask them. The goal is to improve collaboration, increase cultural competence, and really, again, make, give them more tools in their toolbox and help them better serve. And so, overwhelmingly, we hear that all of those kind of boxes are checked, increasing understanding of military and veteran awareness, and really helping them better serve the military and veteran families they serve. Our direct impact from Homefront Military Network, after we merged, we saw a 300% increase in calls for assistance. Combination, I think, of a victim of our own success, if you will, but also, I think the pandemic had a big impact on that. And, you know, that challenge in 2020, is this going to be anomaly or think it's going to go back to whatever normal is in 2021? And they did not. It was, there was another 15% or so percent increase in calls in 2021, and we're still seeing a high call volume. Referrals have increased. The good news is that 94% of the callers indicated the referrals met their needs, and that's gone up. It was, it depends on the year. Last, in 2020, it was a little harder because a lot of folks sometimes were closed or not answering their phone because they were so overwhelmed. So, we want to keep seeing that number go up. 94% expressed improved opinions of community supports. That's a really important data point, because people who feel connected to their community and that their community supports them are in a much better place in terms of kind of upstream suicide prevention and really just overall health and well-being. 86% of all the clients we've served also said they had lower anxiety and stress levels after assistance from us. We also asked different questions and more detailed questions of those we provide financial assistance to, and 84% said that six months after their assistance, they were still in a better place financially. 100% remained stably housed, which is a really important statistic, and 100% had lower stress and anxiety levels. But big picture standpoint of the 4,000 unduplicated clients we served, a little more than that in 2021, we provided emergency financial assistance to 160 families. It was about $242,000 in emergency financial assistance, so that's just a part of what we do. Again, oftentimes, when it can be cost avoidance, or a variety of services, or it might be we partner with somebody else, or they might not qualify for veteran-specific services for a variety of reasons, and we might refer them to other community resources through Cala Charities or some other agency like that. But the goal is to get them the right set of needs, services. Over time, our long-term impact, and you can see 2020 and 2021, that bar went up, you know, pretty dramatically in terms of our overall call volume. Our partner increase, network has increased. We started off with 16 partners with our pilot back in 2012, and now we've got 48. And this was, that was 2021. We added a couple since this, these numbers came out, increasing the number of partner training participants. And referrals, or that's something we want to track, is the network working, are people connecting, they know how to connect to other services? And so, that's something that we're tracking as well, and that is going up. And that's probably the hardest thing to track, is who did you hear, how did you hear about us? Who did you get referred to, or who, and then how did you get connected? And so, those are something we're kind of pounding in all of our partners, please share this information, please ask this information. And if there's something that you're, you know, that, there's the services unavailable, we want to know that, because we want to fill gaps, and we want to minimize duplication and fragmentation of services. That was a very quick overview of a lot of data. If you want the full 57 page, but really, that's just kind of a quick overview of everything that we do. And I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of testimonials. Again, not only does what we do help individual clients, help them clearly with their health and well-being, and we also help partner agencies, you know, whether it's a VA social worker, somebody from Army Community Service, another partner agency, the goal is to better help folks meet their needs. And so, that's just another example of kind of how we're helping the whole ecosystem, and that's as I like to refer to it. So, lots of ways to connect to us, our website, homefrontmilitarynetwork.org, you got to spell out the whole thing. We tried for a shorter one, it wasn't available. Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, some of those I know. We have younger and smarter people who know how to do that in our office. Anyway, that's just a very quick overview. I just kind of wanted to give you all an update of where we are, what we're doing, the connections we're making, see if you have any questions, share information with you. The last time I checked, about 4% of those we help are from the Fountain area, which is kind of in line with what the overall kind of population is in the community. So, that's just a quick overview. I talk fast, there was a lot of stuff. Hopefully, you've got those slides. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from any council members or comments? Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I've worked with alongside of Homefront Military Network, formerly known as Homefront Cares for quite some time since 2015. They do amazingly a great job for our veterans and our active-duty servicemen and women here in the Colorado State area. So, I can truly vouch for them, being a partner with them for quite some time and kind of collaborating. It is a great thing, and it's, it's a need here, especially now, since after coming out of COVID. And as you, you know, expressed it, that there's lots of things that have happened, and there's a lot of service members and veterans that are hurting. And without your organization and other organizations to be able to help bridge a gap, we don't want them to be dependent on a system. We want them to be independent, and really, what we're doing is just trying to bridge a gap and, and help with that independence. So, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, glad to help. And one of that pieces, too, is that pre-COVID, about 10% of those that called us needed really that long-term, they're kind of, had a lot of needs, and it was complex, and they didn't know where to start. In 2021, 52% of the folks who called us needed that level of care. So, it's much more complexity, much more people who are overwhelmed, as Councilman alluded to. So, we're just trying to, like I said, fill that gap and make sure people know how to
So, if someone is in need, are you with, connected with 211?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I can remember that.
211 is easy to remember, yes, our number two. And again, we have an online form. If you just don't want to call anybody, or you're insomniac, you're up at 3 o'clock in the morning, there is a line that will go directly to our case managers. They'll get that the next morning and be able to call back. But yes, 211, we get a lot of referrals through 211.
Okay, good, good, because, yeah, that's a great service, too.
Absolutely.
So, Councilmember Duncan?
You may have answered this question already. The last time you presented, there was some type of gap between services provided here in Fountain. You noted that there was a 300% increase. So, does that include Fountain?
Yes, it's really, and that's across the board. I didn't break down what that increase was and where it came from. And some of that, again, is some of our more statewide focus now as well. But so, it's just making sure people know what's available. That's the biggest challenge right now.
So, if you find somebody in need, and they're a veteran, we suggest send them your way, and with your no wrong answer.
So, we call it the easy button, because our goal is to find the right services. If we can't provide the assistance, we're going to make the connections and then follow up. And whether it's two weeks, two months, or two years, we need to stick with that, that individual or family, we will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, and again, happy to answer. If you have questions later?
Oh, Scott's got his light on over there.
I, you know, Councilmember Hinton gave a great shout out to the organization. I just wanted to make, give a great shout out to Kate. I think I met Kate 14 years ago, when we were at a BRAC conference down in Florida that was sponsored by the DOD. And ever, ever, as long as I've known Kate, she's been at the epicenter of veterans issues and, and really is sort of this go-to person for us, this great resource. And Kate, just a big shout out, a thank you to you specifically and your organization for all you do, but just, just is a great partner for us. Anytime we have a question or an issue, she's our, our immediate resource, finding out where we can go get answers. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for all you guys do as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Absolutely. Come back in a year.
Okay.
All right. We're going to go on to item 4.2, Board Commissions and Committees. We have no appointments tonight, so on to item 5, City Council Agenda Requests. City councils shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. And I'm going to start to my right tonight, Councilmember Duncan.
I'd like to consider the 5:30 startup time on our next agenda.
Turn myself off. Councilmember Applegate?
No, I don't have any requests tonight.
Councilmember Estes? I almost said Tamara.
No requests tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Rick?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Item 6, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do you have any cards tonight?
I do not, ma'am.
Don't have any cards. Is there any from the audience that had any comments tonight? A huge audience. Okay, at least we got an audience, right? All right, thank you for coming. Okay, right, we're on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So, we have items A, B, C, D, and E. Is there any, does anybody want to pull anything off for further discussion? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, item 8 is old business, there's none on the agenda. Item 9, new business, 9A, nothing is removed from the consent agenda. Item 9B, history, discussion, and impacts of dissolved metro districts and HOAs within the city. Mr. Evans?
Mayor, Council, good evening. And just a reminder, this is just a discussion and brainstorming, so no action is necessary tonight. Make it easy and as quick as we can. So, could you put up the other one, Paul, the map that we've got? So, this has been the literal, the other map that shows the right-of-ways. This has been the literal year of the weeds, and not the smoking type, but the growing type. And we have had a lot of moisture this year, so I know you all have been knee-deep in getting those phone calls and issues. And as we started looking at the, at the whys and what solutions we could get to so that we don't go through another one of these years next year, we started looking at the facts, and I, I learned quite a bit as we started pulling out some of this different information. So, I thought it was important both to share it with you, and then I will email everyone this PowerPoint afterwards. So, in the future, next spring, when you start getting those calls, you might be able to refer to it. But just to give a general idea, right now, streetscape in the city or right-of-ways that we're responsible for as a city is right at 77 miles. So, that's kind of, you can see those 77 miles in red. And then also on top of that, both in the green and the yellow, you add on the parks and the detention ponds, which equate to another .2 square miles of foliage or areas that we're responsible for. Now, when you look at that as a city, we don't have a specific department that is responsible for mowing our right-of-ways. It's shared between the Parks Department and the Streets Department. So, through the years, each of those have been assigned to different areas. And when you run through a year, and this isn't something that's just been a problem this year, Scott, I don't know how far back we go, but I know it's been multiple years that we run into this every year. And we haven't been fully staffed in either of those departments, and we're still dealing with issues. And just to give you an example, we hired a full-time transit driver who today was the second day of work, and they didn't show up. So, after going through those hiring process and spending that time and money, you have folks that, that either find another job because they've got so many applications out there. Yesterday went great, from everything we heard, and then today I get a call and didn't show up and can't get ahold of them. So, that's in our transit, but we're dealing with the same staffing issues in parks as well as streets. So, what happens is their responsible, their responsibilities, basically, parks, that's their number-one responsibility, right-of-way maintenance falls down the list of those. So, when they go through the parks, that's the bottom of their, of their areas of responsibility. Streets, as you all know, we have a specific season for streets when they can actually work on those, and those are pretty much April to the end of September, or when we start seeing the first snowfalls. So, that is really when Bob and his folks go to work on fixing the streets, doing the dig-outs, doing the big projects. And again, their mowing of right-of-ways goes down to their lowest priority list. Well, this year, for a large part of our, our summer, our Streets Department was working anywhere between two and four people. I think in the last month, we've added a couple more, so we're above those numbers now. Bob has been down three or four people almost the entire summer. So, not only is this a low priority, but also when they don't have the staffing, they literally don't have the people to go out and do it. So, the last couple of years, myself, others, I know Scott's done it, several others, we've gotten our weed whackers, and we've gone out and, and taken care of business as much as we can as well. So, that's kind of an overall picture of the responsibilities. And then, Paul, let's go to the PowerPoint itself. So, when I started looking into this and trying to solve and say, what can we come up with to change the impacts that we're seeing? First, I think it's important that we take a look at the history of it. And these are all facts that I didn't know. So, out of approximately 27 metro districts and HOAs in the city, 13 of those are now defunct or not active. So, I didn't realize we had so many. And when I say approximate, we could have more than that. There's a lot of different ones, historical, that are smaller and older that we might not have found. But 13, and when they go defunct, the mill levies and the fees are no longer collected and no longer fund the operation and the maintenance of those neighborhoods. So, you can see the responsibilities, regardless if it's an HOA, a metro district, a maintenance district. Basically, they are formed, and they have funding mechanisms to take care of the right-of-ways, the common areas, open spaces, parks, drainage ponds, et cetera. So, what happens when each one of those goes defunct, basically, the city adopts those responsibilities without the funding that was put in place for those, to take care of those responsibilities. So, to give you an example of one that's active today and then one that's, that's gone defunct, you can take a look on the left, and I got all these numbers from Jim McGrady, who is the Metro District Manager for Cumberland Green. But if you take a look, there's 47 total mills that are charged to the homeowners in the Metro Green area. 11.4 of those mills are for the O and M. That equates to about $356 per home, times 560 homes. So, that's what Chris and everybody else that lives in Cumberland Green is funding for the maintenance of all of those different areas. So, when you add that up, you take a look at it, that's just under $200,000 to go to the maintenance of that one specific neighborhood. That is, if you look at the contract that we've got right now, it's only for four months for the areas that we're contracting, have our right-of-ways taken care of, that was $91,000. So, you can see 200,000 goes a long ways. So, that's one that's active, and we love what Cumberland does. Cumberland looks great. Chris, thank you for your support over there. Keep paying those mills, if you would. You look at one that's defunct, and let's take a look at Countryside Special Improvement Maintenance District. And I got these numbers from a gentleman in this room, so I know those are correct as well. So, back in the day, while it was active, they were paying 4.94 mills per house, but when it went defunct, now we're collecting nothing. Now, you can see down here, we pulled this, check that, we pulled this off of the assessor's site, so it still shows that there is a Countryside SIMD, and that John Lewis is the contact, but you can see under the levy that zero mills are collected for that. So, I use this because we have some folks in this area that are frequent flyers and call constantly and want their right-of-ways in the common space areas, they want them to be maintained as they were when they had this improvement maintenance district. And the reality is, when you have an improvement maintenance district, they're usually hit at a minimum once a month. Some of the districts actually require more than that. But when it comes over to the city and we adopt Countryside itself, a road like Jimmy Camp, which is well-traveled, because we've got all the school facilities over there, it might get hit three times a summer, because it's included with those other 77 miles. So, one of the things we wanted to share was, there's no way that we are ever, ever going to be able to maintain those areas as they were, when they were districts, without a funding mechanism. And I didn't realize some of these, and I think another important point to, to show, and I'll show another one, is when these go defunct, there is no requirement right now that they notify the city. There's some that go defunct, and we don't know about it until all the complaints start coming in, and we get Tish and her folks from code enforcement and say, hey, Tish, go enforce this. And they have nobody or no entity that they can actually serve or use any type of enforcement. So, we are looking for solutions. We are attempting, we're working with an attorney that specializes in setting up these metro districts. They worked with Ventana when they came forward with you just a few weeks ago, and they represent us for the city, and we're, we're asking, what else do other entities do? Is there a solution that we can write into these agreements that if they go defunct, can that O and M then transfer over to the city, so we actually have a funding mechanism to take care of their common areas? So, that is something that we're looking into right now, but we do not have in place in any of our current districts. So, here's an idea of the defunct districts and not active HOAs. So, as you look at those, it's quite extensive. Cheyenne Ridge is something that our Parks Board deals with and has heard from a group of folks over in Cheyenne Ridge, that they're not happy that the city hasn't come in and taken over their park. We've got some ideas, and we're going to go out and try to assist them, but just logistically, when, when all of these areas go under, we, again, cannot come out and give them the same type of expectations that they would have. You can go all the way down, you know, Little Ranches was activated in 1965. There's, there's different timeframes and all these type of ones that you look at. Country Club Heights, Council, I mean, Corey and I, we went with Tish and talked to a group of folks up in Country Club Heights, and their expectations was literally that we would come in and act as an HOA. They brought up things to us that they didn't like, some mailboxes of some folks, and wanted us to come in and change the mailbox style and, and who parked their cars where, and maintain, again, their, their right-of-ways and their common areas, and we have to explain this. So that's also why I wanted to share this information. When you have those folks call you, um, please use this. Um, Charter Oak Ranch, I never knew there was a metro district over in that area. Um, the Countryside is one of our biggest areas that we don't have uh, uh, that's active right now. So here is just examples of those that are active. And you have neighborhoods like Cross Creek that does a fantastic job with theirs. Um, uh, the others, uh, let me think, as I look at this list. Ventana, they've done a great job. Heritage does a great job of their maintenance areas. Um, so the ones that are active, you can see how much of a benefit that they are for their communities. But if you go back and you take a look at these and you apply those numbers that we talked about, just between Cumberland Green and Countryside, think about the funding that would be involved, um, if all of those were up and active and actually that funding had reverted to the city. We would be able to have a nice um, department or contracted out, which we're seeing is very effective this year, um, to actually take care of all these common areas. Um, so this is, this is the verbiage that was actually um, utilized by Mr. Daniel Lewis, and you might remember Daniel Lewis. He he ran the uh, what was the group that had that did the plays? Um, over at the DFAC? So he was in front of council several times. It was the, it was the group that used to put on the plays. I don't remember their name.
Community, uh, it's not community theater.
There you go, community theater. So he was also uh, the HOA president for the Fountain Mesa HOA. So Fountain Mesa HOA is, think about if you're going north on Fountain Mesa and you get just past Comanche, they're building Store Quest on the right-hand side, that very next little neighborhood right there, that's the Fountain Mesa Heights HOA. And I know it very well, because this was one of the areas I went out and hit myself this year, because I just got tired of the complaints coming in. Because if you looked at the right-of-way, the weeds got up to your chest along that area. So if you look at his language on here, I thought it was really interesting, and I'll go ahead and read it, uh, down at the bottom that's highlighted. This is when they were uh, terminating the HOA itself, and he reminded everyone, just remember, in getting rid of this HOA, we as homeowners are still responsible for keeping our yard clean and free of clutter. Also, we are still responsible for pulling the weeds and keeping the retention pond grassy area in front of properties mowed. In getting rid of this HOA, we must keep up these areas, or the city could make us bring this HOA back. Now, you can't make, you can't force somebody to bring an HOA back unless you have citizens that are are willing to actively run that HOA. But I thought he he said it very well, that there is going to be impacts that we're responsible for if we get rid of this. But we get numerous calls from this uh, from this neighborhood of why isn't the city coming in and taking care of it? So I thought from his words, it was just a really good example of what the outcome is on these. So this is something, and Paul, if you could go now to the to the aerial.
While you're jumping off that, I just wanna add in there that Mr. Lewis has actually been out there hand mowing some of those big spaces. I've seen him over the years doing it himself, even when they were active HOA. So he was very involved with that HOA there, yeah.
Well, and the first, first time I met Phil Thomas, uh, when I was, when I was chief, was actually, he used to come out and mow the common areas right uh, next to Ohio and Jimmy Camp when he was on the Cumberland Green HOA. So there is a lot of those folks, and I guess if they run them, they actually know what it's all about to get out there and do it themselves. But I wanted to use Fountain Mesa as example, and we've got Tish and Christie here, uh, just to help answer any questions. But if you look at Fountain Mesa, it's a great example of the different areas of responsibility as somebody drives it. If you come up north, go up a little uh, north on Fountain Mesa, Paul, of Jimmy Camp, if you come through here, you see those nice right-of-ways, you see the grass, they're very well-maintained, because we've got the active HOA up there, Cross Creek, uh, on and then another over here in Christie's neighborhood, on both sides of the street, they're active and they take care of everything. I can't believe how many times folks have run into that common wall that they have up here, and it gets fixed pretty darn quick because of these active folks that are up here. So but as you continue to drive and you pass CNS, now this area down here, um, the right-of-way right at the intersection, the city just purchased this corner last year. So we've done the HOA, or excuse me, we've done the ADA improvements, and we started maintaining that. So this year, they went out, and the key to this areas, either cutting or spraying. Spraying takes care of things for much longer, but there's a lot of certifications that come from that. The, our Parks Department won't let me touch a sprayer. That's probably not a bad thing. I'm not certified to touch their sprayers. But as you continue south, you start running into these areas, which these areas are all the responsibilities, at least on the west side of Fountain Mesa, of the homeowners that live there. So they're responsible from their property out to the curb and gutter. And those folks, some of them take great, take great um, care. There was one day when our code enforcement was out, and I know this was one area, that they hit eight of these locations in one day, and in other areas, they hit sixty-four in one day. That's, and that's just reacting from people's complaints that are coming in about the weeds. So then if you look directly on the east side of the street over here that Heritage maintains, there, they do a great job maintaining their area. So then as you continue down, you hit the area that uh, we were just talking about. Continue down south, if you would, Paul. Heritage continues to maintain it, but then when you get right down here, that's where the Fountain Mesa uh, metro district is that's now defunct. So those are the weeds that that came up to your to your waist. Then as you continue down Fountain Mesa, the Hall family owns this on this side, so they are responsible for maintaining on their side. On the other side of Comanche, that's also a private owner that's responsible for theirs. Yet, I went out and hit their property in their corner because it had gotten dangerous and people couldn't see around the corner. So one day I went out and hit things, I hit five locations, and none of the locations were city responsibility, but I went out for safety and just the beautification of our city and hit those things. Then as you continue down and you continue down on Fountain Mesa, once you get past Lake, then you run into again where individual citizens are responsible as you go along. So it's really just a mishmash, but it's the best example I could get. Store Quest up here, once they get done with their improvements, they will be responsible for maintaining along their property boundaries along Store Quest. So it's just a mismatch, a mishmash of of metro districts that are maintaining, of metro districts that have gone defunct, of private citizens that just have one lot to commercial. So it's just a good example of all the different responsibilities as they go. So this is something that we're gonna touch on during the budget workshop on Thursday and and offer some options and and see how city council wants to go down that road. But again, you all know the issues that we're having with our streets right now. Our Streets Department is is way understaffed and underfunded. You know the issues we're having with our parks. You can see the impact on our parks itself with the understaffing that we've had this summer. So then when we just keep adopting these unfunded, the truly unfunded mandates of just adding more and more on to them, there's a certain point where you just, you 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 get to the point where we were this summer. So I wanted to make sure that I shared this information with you, and we just had a discussion. Uh, we are trying to look at solutions. Um, uh, Gordy and I met last year, I think it was, or maybe two years ago, just in the Countryside area, and we talked about, you know, being utilizing a contractor as an option. This is the first year that we've done it, and so far, I think we've heard good feedback on on, you know, the job that they're doing. So um, if you can find good contractors, it is cheaper to go that route than to try to start your own department and to pay salaries and benefits and all the costs that come with that. So let me open the floor. Questions, comments, thoughts?
We get a developer that brings us this beautiful paperwork, model, whatever, looks really, really pretty on paper, and they form a metro district or a HOA. And then once their debt is paid off, they can choose to dissolve it, and then there is no mechanism for the city to say you can't do that. Okay, is this something that potentially needs to be handled at a state level? Because I can't believe we're not the only city dealing with this.
Christie, has Tim talked about anything at the state level?
So we did speak with the special district's attorney, Tim Flynn, um, who we've utilized for years, and he's not aware of another instance where a metro district has gone defunct. If those instances where they have gone defunct, they've repaid the debt, but a lot of the times, it's the maintenance of the roadways that have already been paid off and accepted by the municipality. There hasn't been an instance that he was aware of of where a metro district um, went defunct, and those mills were then transferred to the city, because then legally, the city would have to apply that same mill levy to everybody within the community, not within just the specific area.
So we have a situation where they come in, they form a metro district or an HOA, they're not required to inform the city when they're not gonna have it any longer. I I know, I stumbled on one when I was walking once to be elected, these people were all upset, and and I know Sylvia did some research, and we didn't even realize the HOA had dissolved. Um, because they were complaining, why hasn't it been mowed in X amount of years, and trees growing in the drainage ditch and all that? Um, and there, so there's no recourse. Um, but we allowed them to become a metro district to take care of their own properties like this as part of, okay. It's it's like the, the egg and the chicken, which
It truly is, yeah.
Which came first. So I, and I was thinking more in state in terms of, is there a legis, a legislation that needs to come from the state? That's what I was thinking more in in terms of. Um, and if now there is, this is the perfect time for us to try to work with someone to get that run.
Yeah.
Um, but we, I think we need more information before we would go to a representative or or senator to try to, try to work.
I think what we'll do, because Scott's been brainstorming, and he had a a good idea today of possibly leveling type of metro districts with their O and M and their their capital separated. So once their capital is is resolved, then could the O and M go to us so that we could continue to maintain their areas? So I think what we'll do is, as we're talking about these, we'll we'll have that discussion with Tim Flynn and find the legalities out. And but if you have any of those type of ideas, please send them to me so that we can kind of have an agenda with him and and put all those ideas together. Because I like your idea, maybe is there something we can do at a state level to just allow us through state law to be able to do that?
Well, it seems like at a minimum, a municipality should have to be somehow legally served with the, them trying to think of their dissolving, and they need to have a conversation with how that could impact the um, community.
The example I showed with Fountain Mesa Heights, um, this one dissolved in twenty nineteen, and we didn't realize it until we started getting the complaints. Didn't know about it.
Councilmember Rick?
Yes, two items. I believe, and I'm gonna defer to either you or Jennifer, that at one time, uh, the Streets Department did all the mowing, and when the roadway focus group looked at how to improve things, we decided to split mowing between streets and parks. Am I correct, or did I misremember?
No, that was, that was decided long before the roadway focus group was established. Those, those traditional areas, and I don't know if there's any rhyme or reason of who fell responsible to what, um, but it's just through the years, as these things have gone defunct, different departments have picked them up as a responsibility. But that started occurring long before my time and long before the roadway focus group time.
Okay. And then for Christie, uh, I'm not sure if you were here then when Countryside went defunct.
Nope, that predates me, but I'm well-versed in that, that district.
The fallout?
If I remember correctly, there was an initiative that went before the voters to where they could continue the maintenance district, or the city would build them a fence, because that was the big, big concern at the time. The fence was uh, falling apart, and the maintenance district was going defunct. And the voters decided, ha, yeah, just build the fence and get rid of the the district.
Predates myself, I don't know.
All right. And when you're saying voters, are you, hang on just a second. Troy's laughing because he was knee-deep in it with me.
Christie, real quick, when you say voters, do you mean the voters of the metro district, not the entire city? I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Okay.
So there was an initiative, um, there were three ballot issues put on the ballot in two thousand and two, um, regarding the Countryside Special Improvement District. The first one was, should the Countryside Special Improvement Maintenance District be dissolved and reestablished using a general improvement district? This is a completely separate district than the the GIDs that we're familiar with um, to date. That failed. The second question on the ballot was, should there be debt issued in association with that GID, that general improvement district? And that failed. The last question was, should the mill levy be adjusted down in the, I believe it was the district? And that passed. But the, because the first one failed to get dissolved the special improvement district and go to a GID, the subsequent two ballot measures didn't matter at that point. They were a moot point. So the special improvement district wasn't necessarily defunct, it's still dormant, because as uh, Mr. Evans had showed on the tax um, initiatives, that's still on the tax rolls, but they are, were not collecting any sort of a mill levy with it. There were funds in the um, account balances for multiple years, um, I think it ended in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, where those funds were then expended within the boundaries of the Countryside um, Special Improvement District. One of those was the construction of a fence. Um, but since then, all those funds have been expended, and there's been a zero balance in there. But um, that district still legally exists within the tax records, we just haven't certified a mill levy since two thousand and eight.
Can we, and I guess this is a Troy question, instead of allowing a developer who comes in and wants to build uh, a new uh, community, can we require them to do a GID and say, we don't want no more homeowners associations because they go defunct?
So we've pushed heavily in the last ten years to move away from HOAs and more into a metro district because of just our transient nature of of our community, that HOAs don't necessarily have that sustaining power. Metro districts, on the other hand, have a guaranteed revenue source through the property mill levies on their property taxes. So regardless, if you are a renter or you sell that house, you're going to continue to have those funds. So that's where we've pushed more for metro districts because of that funding source that can help maintain in the long term for those maintenance areas. If somebody came in and said, we wanted to do an HOA, I don't know if legally we could say, you can't do it, but we would be more of an education on our experience within our community with HOAs. That's not to say that there aren't HOAs in our community that haven't been successful, there certainly have been, but the majority of them, as been shown, don't survive long term. Um, in terms of a GID, GIDs are a little bit different from metro districts because GIDs are operated from the municipalities level. So we have GID one, GID two, where the city's more involved in that maintenance part of it, um, and that would be just a conversation with council if that's something that they want to move forward.
Do GIDs allow for maintenance, or is it just improvements themselves, the capital?
That part I'd have to look more into on those regulations.
I think the GIDs are only for the improvements. Uh, uh, even, we would, we would wanna look at that, but I think they're only for improvements. And so the discussion I had with Todd, the thing that we wanna run by Tim is to see if if you can layer a metro district on top of a maintenance district. And so instead of having the metro district that has both a debt service and the maintenance mill levy, it would only be the debt service with the metro district, so that once that debt's paid, they can go away if they want. But the maintenance district, because that is something that the council has a say in, that would stay, that would always be there for the main, unless the city council at some point decides to dissolve it. But at least the city has skin in that game. But that's a conversation, again, that has to happen with the attorney.
Councilmember Applegate?
So what you're saying is, they go a metro district and a maintenance district also, and is the ma, um, metro district is a state organized thing, but is the maintenance district?
Yeah, both, I mean, both of them are, yeah, both of them are controlled by by state law, and they have to go through different elections, and there's different elections type, as you saw with Ventana, and usually the developers are are the initial board members, and then they have to go out eventually to the citizens.
In the maintenance district also? How is that so much different than a metro district? The metro district, I know the developer gets paid a lot of money for
They get paid back for what they put into the
Does the maintenance district do that too? They cover the roads and stuff later on?
No, I mean, there, there's different special, like uh, uh, Gordy's over in uh, in Countryside. That was set up at such a low mill levy because that was set up as a special uh, maintenance district just to take care of the O and M maintenance of that neighborhood. And it sounds like that, and then it became an issue, will you build fences and will you do other things? And those probably weren't covered in their initial, in their original scope. Um, but yeah, there's, there's different ways they can set up so that they can put parameters around what it's gonna pay for.
Is either one of them, is there a way that we can require that the O and Ms come to us if they defunct?
That's what we're checking into legally.
Okay, cuz
Which, which even it sounds like with with Christie's initial discussion with Tim Flynn, it may take a a change of state law to be able to do that.
Because HOAs, not many people are gonna do that nowadays, you don't see much of it.
Yeah.
But, well, we defunct over there in Countryside, but we have no common area. There's not a common area in there.
The neighborhood I live in, uh, we pay an HOA fee, which just goes to the right-of-ways because we have no parks, we have no common areas either. It's doubled in the last twenty years. It's still running at least, but it's just to take care of the maintenance of the right-of-way areas. And and as you can see, I mean, when we're, when we, when we compare those amounts, take a look at what Cumberland, you know, puts aside just for their maintenance of their of their areas. If you come, if you compare that, that's what our streets maintenance line has been for the last two years, hundred and fifty, and then you all have approved another fifty. So that's the same amount that comes in for our maintenance of a hundred and seven miles of road. So it's a substantial amount um, that goes to these.
Councilmember Hanton?
So, lot of, lot of information. So are we doing, trying to help with our current bills, you know, moving them in a direction of the, I would guess, a me, metro district and kinda the the residents there didn't, didn't want it, and now we're, we're stuck with all the, the weeds and everything? So are we trying to help the developers and the new bills kinda move in that direction that you talked about, Chrissy?
We do, I would say primarily, most of the new developments do move towards a metro district as a funding source for them to put in the public improvements, water, sanitary sewer, roadways. That doesn't mean that they still can't superimpose an HOA on top of that.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, thank you.
And there are some negatives with metro districts too, and so when we get to some solutions, we come back, we can talk about those negatives, because there, there are some of those as well. I mean, they're literally a separate form of government.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, anything? I hope this was helpful. I wish I had done it last spring. So when you got all those phone calls, you had a little ammunition, at least to talk realistics what's going on. And I also just want to let you know, I, again, I've worked in other government entities, and customer service-wise, I've never seen a customer service like we do here. And that's our culture, and that's what we, that's our standard that we set for everyone, and we demand that. But we also have to realistically let folks know. We don't have the people that every time they call, I think I was telling Gordy, it was either today or yesterday, I had someone call me that wanted us to come out to pick two weeds. And I literally just, yeah, I just shook my head, and I'm like, are they, is there something? Are you, can you, are you not able to do it? Well, no, I shouldn't have to do it. And I'm like, we need to get back to that All-American City attitude, where we're willing, we want to help our neighbors, and we want to go out. And if there's two weeds to be picked, we go out and we pick those two weeds. And that's not just the City of Fountain. That's, we need that, you know, in every neighborhood across the nation. So, we just hope that some education, and so folks understand what's going on out there. But I'll send all of this to you individually. And as Scott said, we'll keep looking at these solutions. And we can tell you, on both our behalf, we'll be back in front of you before next spring with some solutions. And then we'll also talk about some on Thursday as well. Okay? Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I was gonna ask if Tish wanted to say anything.
Oh, Tish?
Since you're on the front line with us.
Yeah, please. Or if Jennifer wanted to jump up on the roadway focus group, please. But no, roadway focus group didn't have anything to do with it.
Good evening, everybody. I think the only...
Could you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Officer Tish Cornell. I am the supervisor of the Neighborhood Services Code Enforcement for the City of Fountain. I would agree with Mr. Evans that we took a significant number of calls from individuals who were upset about areas that were not mowed. I will admit that I was new. I did not know about the area over on Jenny Camp that Mayor Thompson ended up having to go out and meet with one of our citizens over. And so I spent probably a couple of days going back and forth with him, trying to explain to him that property owners were responsible for mowing to the curb, not knowing that this was an HOA that had gone defunct before he finally, I guess you could say enlightened me and moved on to Mayor Thompson. So I apologize for that. However, it does come into play. And then as far as the code enforcement side is concerned, it's very difficult for the officers in my office to go out and cite property owners who have weeds that legitimately are between five to eight foot tall on individual residential, on residential street properties, because the first thing they say to us is, "We'll cut ours when you cut yours", which, to some degree, is illegitimate. However, you know, taking into consideration, when you're talking one property owner, one property versus 77 miles of roadway and other, certainly not an excuse, but it is a reason. So I'm hoping that next year, we will all be able to come to the table with some solutions to be able to ensure that everything is met as it should be, and that the citizens that live in these residential areas are not having to live with, you know, the things that tend to come with those types of situations when you've got six to nine-foot weeds. A lot of people don't realize they really are a hazard in addition to just being unsightly. So hopefully, next year, we'll be a little better prepared. And I certainly appreciate everybody's patience, especially with our department. We've been just as short-staffed as everybody else.
Tish, if you would, just give everybody a quick timeline of even when you cite someone, how long it takes to get through that process? Because we have a lot of folks that want code enforcement to go out and cite somebody, and they want something done the next week, right? They want the city to be abating that property in a week. So let everybody know how long that timeline takes.
And that timeframe actually is a lot more extended than most people would realize. We were also inundated with calls for service, so we were behind on some of our, answering some of our calls for service. Normally, we like to answer those within 48 to 72 hours, at least to get out to address the problem, simply due to the fact that it does take a while. And we actually were two to three weeks behind at some point during the summer. However, when we cite someone, especially for a weeds or junk violation, it is 10 business days. That does not count weekends or holidays. So effectively, they get about two and a half weeks to correct the issue, at which point, we go back out, we do a re-inspection. If they have corrected the violation, we close it. It's done. However, if they have not, at that point, we go out and we issue, our process has changed this year, but now what we do is we issue a final notice. That gives them an additional five days to correct it. If after that five days, they don't correct it, then we issue them a notice of an abatement hearing, which then is 30 days out, because we have to send certified to the property owners, because not everyone lives here. By the time we get in front of the court for that hearing, we've, you know, we've had that 10 days, that additional five, and an additional 30, we're really 45 to 60 days out to get somebody in for an abatement hearing. And if the judge does give us a court order, we're still an additional 10 days roughly out before we can actually go out and abate based off of that court order. So when people do put in a call, I want people to voluntarily comply, so we do the best we can to give them that option.
It doesn't matter. Ladies first.
So in other words, if you want to get complaints in and have something done, get it done early in the summer, because by this time of year, the weeds are gone anyway, get dead.
To some degree. Unfortunately, this year, a lot of them, we were surprised. Those two or three weeks out, we go out, they were still there. And we did go through the whole process with some folks. It was a little crazy this year. This is probably the worst I've ever seen. The month of August, we had 204 complaints in the month of August alone, which is way above what we've ever had in calls for service in a month before.
But it's more helpful if people go online and use the app to turn it in, rather than expect you to call them back, right?
That is true.
Councilmember Hinton?
So does the same timeline apply for abandoned houses that have, you know, there's nobody living there, there's weeds growing? I get several calls, and I get one from a person to a person, my wife that's called me several times, like, "What are we doing about this?" I'm like, "I don't know, we'll figure it out." But there's, I've seen several abandoned houses. If they're abandoned, or the renters have left, or, and they're not taking care of their properties, that same timeline still applies for that as well?
It does. A lot of times, when the renters move out, there's a property manager that's involved in addition to the property owner. If we have a business license on file for them, we do try to expedite that by making those phone calls and emails, trying to make those contacts with those individuals to let them know that nobody's there and it needs to be done. However, a large majority of our rentals' properties do not have a business license as required.
Right.
So we have to go through that whole process. And unfortunately, it's those individuals that we have to mail it to and send it certified that make that process as long as it is, because we have to give them the opportunity to have gotten that notification.
For sure. Thank you.
I've had a couple people express concerns about some of these really gigantic weeds. I mean, we're thankful for the rain this year, but looking at how you want to look at it, you got it at the right time. If you have a garden, you got it at the wrong time to help the weeds in the city, right? But they're concerned about ADA issues when they're having to see people in wheelchairs or with strollers have to go out in the street because the weeds are so far over into the sidewalks. Is there any way to expedite those situations?
So there is. We can do what we call an emergency abatement for anything that's causing obstruction or is deemed a serious hazard. I personally feel that if people, children, elderly, handicap norm, you know, are pushed into the street based off the fact that they can't use a sidewalk, is an issue. So that is something where we can expedite. It won't go through that entire process, but it would have to at least go through a five-day process at a minimum by the time we post it, send the notice, and that type of thing. We, I think we encountered one situation where it was actually called in that way. But there had been three other complaints, but nobody said anything about the sidewalk obstruction. Once we realized there was a sidewalk obstruction, we actually did step that up, and we did get that individual one. But I'm sure there are plenty of others that I just wasn't aware of. But there is, if they call it in, or if they entered in the system correctly.
So Todd, let's talk about Highway 85 and Mesa Ridge Parkway. We know they're not ours. But we do have issues on Highway 85 where the sidewalks are blocked. And I know you've notified CDOT before. So, and I've talked personally to some of the people at CDOT, and we're still not getting any response, and I'm sure you have too.
Well, in some of those areas, like, I think one of those areas where you're seeing that overgrown is down by Scott's, right along there. That's, the property owner's not CDOT's. So that's one where, again, we have to go out, and it's a three, it's really a two and a half to three-month process. And remember, that's if the judge decided, or decides, that it does have an abatement. Sometimes the judge may not decide that. It's totally in their hands at that point. But that specific area, that's a property owner, not a CDOT area.
Right. Okay. Then the businesses along up by the Walmart area?
That's, that is, the majority of that, and they have a... Doesn't Walmart, remind me, Christie, don't they have a business district up there?
No.
They don't have one? So the Mesa Ridge stuff, they have a business district up there? That's what you've seen online, people battling about getting the potholes filled and those types of things?
No, no, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about this, you know, right along Mesa Ridge Parkway with the weeds and different things, and right along, you know, the sidewalks.
Yep.
Yeah. And they have a complaint online, a complaint form online.
Yep.
And all I can say at this point, people, is send your photos to the governor.
Yeah. Because CDOT is really, I think, in the exact same situation we are with staffing and everything else.
Right.
So they just triage everything that comes in, and the lowest priorities, which is beautification, falls to the wayside.
Right. Some of those weeds are just really ridiculously high.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from anybody? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Thank you so much. I appreciate the hard work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that takes us on to Item 10, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Traynor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any reports for tonight.
I'd get in trouble if I had anything else, Mayor. I don't have anything.
You've always got more. You've always got more. Okay. Troy?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Chief Heber? Troy's not sharing.
Oh, no.
Play nice over there.
So I'll be brief with some good news. So in two weeks from today, I'm really proud to announce I'll be introducing, pending the last part of his process, a physical pass. Chief Devin Graham will be joining the Public Safety Team in the City of Fountain. He's the former chief of Roswell, New Mexico Fire Department. Roswell, if you know anything about Roswell, is very isolated in New Mexico, so he was chief of a 100-person department. He served in that department since he was 19 years old. He's a multi-generation firefighter that included his final grade was chief of that department. The people that were there at the interview process, Ms. Tamron Gordon, Scott, myself, HR, and most importantly, the three firefighters that we had part of our process that represented all three different shifts, male, female, all ranks were included, really believed, based on the interview process, that he was clearly our number-one selectee coming out based on his tenure, his experience, his knowledge, budgetary management, leadership. And that was pretty strongly felt. So that's really good news. He's coming up here with his wife. What I do have in common, and Todd does a little bit, two small children to still raise that already have been in the elementary school yet. So I think if Chief Devin gets here, he gonna be here for a while, trying to raise those kids. So he's very excited. He's already contracted a house in Cumberland Green, so he'll be joining, paying for the Metro District, as Todd referenced. But we're very excited to get him on board and get us stabilized and move the organization forward. In two weeks, I'll be bringing, and we'll talk about it on Thursday. We just need your approval a little early, within the budget, to get an ambulance ordered. We'll be discussing that tomorrow night. I'll bring that before you, the first week, in, first meeting in October. And then we have some internal moves that we're looking at to help staffing in the fire department that you've all been a part of and had multiple conversations. I plan to bring that to you once Chief Graham gets here, takes a look at it, that second week in October, so we can stabilize our fire department force and get them some help, and, you know, really prepare for what the future's going to be. That being said, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Tom for his almost five months of service. You know, he wasn't looking for a job at the time. He was called, then answered the call, and came here and provided leadership, and a lot of staff work, and a lot of mentoring to his team in a short time, and a lot of interaction with city council. And he was very good with the public and built relationships. To trust of Tom's character, and maybe you could just echo this when you see him, you know, he volunteered to stay on another two weeks to help assist Chief Graham, really getting a good rip, and really getting information, and being set up for success. He did not have to do that. He could have took his toys and went home early. But that was really a true test of his character, his commitment as a professional, and a commitment to Chief Graham and making sure our city's successful. Tom has reiterated that to me multiple times in our conversations. So I'd like to really thank him for his service. He, Chief Graham will be here in two weeks. I'll be bringing him to the next city council meeting. And pending any questions I have, that'll be a short brief from me, because Todd stole our time tonight with his Metro District doctorate review. So thank you for that. So thank you. Want to give you good news.
Thank you very much. That's exciting. And thank you to everybody who worked on that committee. I know it was extra time, and thank you for all the time that you put into that. So really, really appreciate it. Okay. Dan?
I'm good, thank you.
John?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing I wanted to convey this evening is last week, I traveled to Washington DC as part of the Colorado Springs DC fly-in, where we had the opportunity to meet with senior leadership from the Department of Defense, and then our congressional delegation. And it was a neat experience to meet with senior leaders from the Pentagon, and particularly the Army, that during their meetings with us, and, you know, and we had representatives from Colorado Springs, from the county, businesses all over the region. And during those meetings, they consistently brought up Fountain as such a great partner. And so, it's my pleasure to report that our military partnerships are very, very strong from just here with our neighbors and the soldiers and their families that we serve every day, all the way up to the Pentagon in Washington DC. That's all I have for this evening.
Great. Thank you for going to that.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. IT?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I need to remember to get my phone from you guys. All right. Joni?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing to add? Is anybody I missed? Tish, you've already been up here. Anything else to add?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Okay. Gordon?
Just want to remind everyone that this is Creek Week. City staff will be going out tomorrow. I will be joining city staff to do a cleanup on the creek. I encourage everyone to do what you can to help clean up our area. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Portemestis?
I just want to add on to Councilmember Ricks. It is Creek Week, starting on Saturday, and there's many, many, many opportunities to participate, including the pub crawl. And if you want to know all the activities, they're on the calendar for the Fountain Creek Watershed District, and that's at fountain-carc.org. And there's just a ton of things out there. Get out there and participate.
Thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
Okay. I just wanted to say that I will be participating in the Creek Week on tomorrow. Thank you for the reminder of that. We also do that in our community across creeks. Thank you for the reminder of that. We also do that in our community across creeks. So we always go out and clean up those communities, the parks that's in there. Also participated in the Community Night in the Park. It was great seeing everyone out there that participated in that. It was a great event, as usual. I was also honored to be a panelist at the Legislative Town Hall. The talking points on this was housing, and transportation, and other services. It really ran full circle with me. My aunt that lives here in Whitefield is disabled, and she got her disability in her home with carbon dioxide. So, and that was one of the many reasons that I moved out here to Fountain, was to help with my aunt that has disabilities. And my mom, for, since I was five, and who retired from a state facility, also worked with people who were not able to take care of themselves. So this, this was real full circle for me, and I was honored to be a part of that. And there are also grants, I don't know, this is gold for my favorite chief. There are grants that are out there. I don't know if you know about these grants, that boost training, recruitment and retention, and resources for the increase in community safety in the community. One of them is Senate Bill 22-145, and this is resources to increase community safety. There's another bill, Senate Bill 22-001, and this is Crime Prevention Through Safer Streets Grant Program, and they're taking applications through October the 19th. So there's a short window. The other Senate Bill 22-145, Multidisciplinary Crime Prevention and Crisis Intervention Grant Programs, very short window, applications being accepted through October the 4th. And these grant programs, they have at least $5 million of dollars that they are giving funding to local law enforcement. I don't know if you know about those, but hopefully we can take part in those grants and get in information. So, okay.
Thanks for bringing that. We're actually applying for one of those grants, for the Safer Street Grants.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty, I'm done.
All right, thank you. All right. I'd like to thank Fountain Fort Carson for allowing myself and a couple other people to be judges at what they call Domination Day. I guess in the olden days, we called it Spirit Week, right? But it was really fun to see the kids get out there, and they had all sorts of activities for the kids to do, and art, and different things, just to build, build continuity with their classes as they're getting back to the school year. So that was, that was really fun. It was a beautiful day. We had a nice breeze, and I only managed to sunburn the top of my feet where I didn't put any sunscreen on. All righty. And then we had an ARPA grant ceremony, hats off to the, to the Water Department over there. You got, how much was the grant?
A little over $2 million.
A little over $2 million to dig a big hole and fill it with water.
Yeah, we kinda got the whole-
Pretty much. Yep.
Fill it, yep.
Right. And so that is fantastic, because that is on our strategic plan to help with our water stuff. And thank you to John for helping me with the remarks for that. That was a really, really nice event, and if you keep your eye on the news, you might, might see some exciting stuff with that. Hats off also to the cemetery group that did the Lantern Tour last weekend. Always great to get out there and meet some citizens that are permanently in residence over at the cemetery, and hear their stories of when they were helping build our community. Connections for Life did a great tour of what they're doing for our city and town. They are looking for volunteers to help within the area. So if you have some time, especially on Thursdays and Fridays, or their busy days, but they do give out a lot of food to our community, so they're looking for people to volunteer and help out with that. And a little thrift store they had over there, we have a new captain for the Salvation Army, and Scott and I had a meeting with her and got to meet her, and she's here, and she's excited to be here. And that's another organization, again, in our area that is looking for volunteers to help. They will be getting ready to start their annual kettle ringing, so if you can volunteer for that, rather than them having to hire workers, any time that you can volunteer for a few hours really, really helps them save the money. Basically, any money you put in a kettle in the south end of the Fountain Valley stays in the Fountain Valley. So if you're gonna donate to the Salvation Army, don't put it in a bucket up north, because the money stays up north, but the money in the bucket down here in the Fountain Valley. So, and that includes Whitefield Security Areas, and the Safeway that's over off of 115 is considered part of that area. So if you wanna volunteer there, that would be great. And I also was on the Resource Exchange Town Hall meeting for special needs people, and that's probably the third or fourth year I've done that. It's a great group of people with a lot of, lot of great questions, and, and they come straight from the community, the people that are involved in that. And, and so it's good to hear what's important to them and what's going on. So hats off to Resource Exchange and all the caregivers and providers and the, the different people that are involved with that. It really, really does help the families. All right. So Joni, number 11, announcement of an executive session.
Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard. Okay, come back.
I went to the ESA, and we got a grant for our fire department for about $15,000.
$15,000? All right, good job. What are we gonna use that one for? Do you know?
I don't, but they have a good plan for it. It's gonna be for Lexa Pol- Policies and Procedures Offset, but we're tracking that grant. It's been good. We got a grant for body cameras for about $16,000 that came in. We'll follow up on the other grant, so we're working real hard to try and see where we can get help.
That also included laptops for training.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Richard. All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else I missed? Okay. All right. Joni, announcement of an executive session?
In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the city council in open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from consideration. The purpose of tonight's executive session or pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024, for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of the executive session minutes. CRS Section 24-6-4024F, for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of this matter in open session, any member of this body, or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees.
Okay, we have a motion from the city clerk. Before we act on that, though, I would like to say, since we do have the GID, we're gonna do what we did the last meeting. We will, we will adjourn this, go immediately into the GID, which should be very quick, and then we will take a quick break while the city clerk is setting up for the executive session. So, so with a motion on the floor from the city clerk for an executive session, what would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
I was waiting to see what was gonna happen. How about I make a motion?
She's, she, okay.
Okay, it's okay. All right, we got it. All righty. We have a motion in a second on the floor for, to move into executive session. Please vote. All right. Thank you very much. I am now adjourning the city council meeting for tonight. I am reopening as the GID for second reading of Ordinance 1779-GID1, in ordinance of the Fountain General Improvement District Number One, City of Fountain. There we go. Singer Subdivision Addition into the Fountain General Improvement District Number One, City of Fountain, Colorado.
Good evening, Christy Martinez. This is the second reading of the ordinance to consider inclusion of the Singer's Addition land into GID Number One. There have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
Okay. I don't, the screen is kinda gone, so we're just gonna have to go old-school, huh? All righty.
Give me one second, it's coming right back up.
Okay, it's gonna come right back up. Okay. All righty. Councilmember, I thought I saw, okay, Estes?
I move to approve Ordinance 1779-GID1 on second reading.
Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any discussion of Ordinance 1779-GID1? Okay. Okay, we don't have the voting app on. Are we just gonna go with a verbal vote?
I'm sorry, it's thinking on this side, so we'll just do a verbal vote. Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Portemestis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I am now adjourning the meeting of the GID District. And we will be on a break until 7:30, while the city clerks get the rest of it set up.